Okay, let's call it to order. We're gonna call the City Council Redevelopment Agency Power Housing and Financing Authority to order. City Clerk?
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member, Christ.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Marcus.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman, Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman, Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is Pastor Rich from Calvary Chapel.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you so much for the privilege of prayer that we might come to you to seek out your wisdom and your direction. And Lord, we thank you for this council that you've put here that they might seek you out as they make decisions to move this city in the direction that you desire to go. And so, Lord, we thank you, and we look forward to the work that you're going to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Oh, that's right.
Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, endless, for all.
Well, Henry, do you wanna say a few words about what occurred this week?
Yes, sir.
Actually, today.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, to all of the staff, to everyone else who's under the sound of my voice, I need to tell you, as far as I'm concerned, this is one of the happiest days of my life, to know that our city is where it is because of the goodness and the protection of God. And we have stood fast in having the right to come before him and use his name as we know his name to be. That tells me that long after you're gone, and after, particularly after me, 'cause a year and a half now, I'll be 80, and I'm just thankful as I can be to know that the Lord is still good and on his throne. So, I wanna say, thank God for this victory, and I wanna thank you all for standing fast and not giving up on what God has called us to do. So, ladies and gentlemen, and to our mayor, that our job is not just to make decisions, but to make right decisions, and right decisions cannot come from anywhere except through the power of God. Thank you so very much. Stand fast and keep on standing. God bless you.
Henry, you're supposed to tell them we won the lawsuit.
Well, I said the word victory, and we won the lawsuit. God bless you, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, any items to be removed?
No, sir.
That's from the Agency Consent Calendar? Okay, do we have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes?
I'll move that we adopt M1.
Wait a minute, I have two sets of minutes, right?
Are we doing them at the same time, Mr. Adams? For the agency, M1 and M2 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move that we adopt M1 and M2.
I'll second.
Let's vote. Well, just do it by acclamation. Okay, fine. Passed. Okay. On NB, Item 1, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we do.
Okay, Jason Cottle, you wanna...
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity today to present this to you. Before you today is the review and approval of a confidentiality agreement and a reimbursement agreement with Critical Path Transmission. On March 8th, 2011, this council authorized the formation of Lancaster Power Authority for the intent to participate, develop, acquire, and operate energy facilities throughout the community. Over a period of time, we've been working diligently to develop, first identify projects, develop projects that have a threefold benefit: one, of creating jobs; two, creating economic sustainability to the city; and three, generating investment capital to the community. The project before you today is one of those projects. The project consists of a 36-mile underground transmission line from North Edwards Air Force Base to the Vincent Lugo Substation at Highway 138. The project provides a number of benefits to the community. First and foremost, it provides redundancy to the Edwards Air Force Base and their electricity system. It also provides access to Cal-ISO grid from a significant number of solar energy generating projects that are in the Eastern Kern area, as well as a 500-megawatt project that's on Edwards Air Force Base as well. Not only will it provide access to new energy generation, it also provides opportunities for the Eastern Kern, or Eastern Kern as well as the Antelope Valley, to generate new projects that have yet to be approved or yet to be even thought of. The project is a partnership between the Lancaster Power Authority, Critical Path Transmission, to work jointly in developing, receiving the necessary permits and approvals to build, fund, operate, and maintain this project. This is a long-term project. This is not something that happens overnight. This is the beginning. This is the first of numerous agreements that'll happen, numerous permitting processes, and numerous decisions by this council. The second component of your approval tonight is not only the MOU with Critical Path, but it's also reimbursement agreement. That reimbursement agreement sets out opportunities for the city's time, energy, and materials to be reimbursed as part of this project. So, in essence, we are partnering with this company to help build this transmission line in exchange for reimbursement for any of our costs associated with the transmission line, any time of staff, any time of materials that we put into this project as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and as we proceed down this path, there'll be far more detailed development agreements and other things that will be presented to your council.
Thank you. Any questions?
Speaker's cards, Mr. Mayor, if I could make an announcement. Several, for past several meetings, this council has had a policy of really enforcing the law on the speaker cards, that it's this opportunity for the public to make comments on the agenda item that we're talking about, and so, we will cut you off. The mayor's put me in charge of making sure that everybody stays on point and that we can take your input so we can make a decision. So, here's the first speaker card, Mr. Mayor.
Michael Reeves.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Staff, as a citizen, I'm not clear on this agreement that we're about to get into with Critical Path. First of all, I'm not sure about how we're gonna be reimbursed, whether we're gonna be reimbursed as the project goes on, or are we gonna be reimbursed at the end of the project? $50,000 is a lot of money, and I'd like to have more specific answers. According to an article in the Antelope Valley Press, there was a discussion of lines, underground lines on the poles, and it says that the high-voltage line underground is costly, but in the long run, a better option than erecting more rows of high-power transmission towers, which draw opposition from communities they run through. I think, I don't know what the cost is of underground versus power poles, but I think that it would benefit the city to find out the cost. If we have to transmit the power and it's cheaper on power poles, let's use power poles. Finally, you know, I'm kind of opposed to the city getting any kind of solar agreement at this point because of the economic conditions in our country. You know, in another month, we may not have any federal government. If you listen to the president tonight, we may not be able to send out veterans and social security checks. I think it would behoove the council, at this point, to refrain from making any agreements in solar energy or any agreements until, for a month, until we see what the financial crisis in this country is. Thank you very much.
That's it for the speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That's it for the speaker cards.
Okay. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the confidentiality agreement and reimbursement agreement with Critical Path Transmission, LLC.
I'll second.
Let's vote. Moving on to a new business item, too.
One speaker card, Mr. Mayor.
Let's waive the staff report.
Would you like to give the speaker?
I know. We can still waive the staff report.
Sure.
Any objections to waiving the staff report?
No, not at all.
Okay. David G.
Okay, the Powers Authority actions, it states that you guys can do this under Article 11, Section 9, which is a municipal corporation may establish, purchase, and operate public works to furnish its inhabitants with light, water, power, heat, transportation, or means of communication. It may furnish those services outside its boundaries except within another municipal corporation which furnishes the same service and does not consent. Now, I understand that the agreement is for 20 years, and what the agreement also states is that Pittsburgh, which is, I think, in California, has the authority, will have a municipal authority in our city in order to obtain real property, in order to establish power plants throughout the city. And according to this, it doesn't say that you can do that, and it doesn't say that you can't, so you can't. If our city board, like, the Kern County line, Lancaster, now, if we have inhabitants, which is residents, on, right there at the border of Kern County and Lancaster, and they need power, we have a right to build a power plant there in order to help them obtain this power. And if it's not economically viable, we can then in turn go into Kern County and purchase the power from them, or, under an agreement, build a power plant with them. It doesn't stipulate that we can create a municipal authority, and every other year they can have a three-fifths vote in order to establish power plants throughout the city whenever they feel like it. So, that's where I think that this law, or this, this is being, this constitutional law is being misconstrued in order to accomplish an agenda, and I don't understand. And especially for 20 years, I mean, you know what I mean, 20 years? Come on, I'll be 40. Let me see, the right to engage in business retention, development activities in areas served by the HDPA, who's gonna be, who's gonna be the HDPA? Who's gonna be the, on that council? Is it gonna be you guys? I know you guys are on the Lancaster Power Association, am I correct? Lancaster, the LPA? Are you guys seating on that? Are you guys gonna seat on this one, too? Each party in this agreement has the power to establish, own, operate, or cause to be operated a municipal utility and contracting parties designated for the purpose of government Can the court, or can the city attorney tell me whether or not I am right?
Any discussion?
No discussion.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the memorandum of understanding and the power purchase agreement with Morgan Solar Inc. to cooperately to design and construct the 140-kilowatt concentrated photovoltaic solar generation facility.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to the council consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we need to pull council consent calendar items 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. That leaves the remaining CC1, 3, and 12, and if there's no other discussion, I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
The check registry, this is why it's really important, everybody needs to understand, this is what the city pays the bill, or pays for in the city. I've been doing a lot of research on it, and I know I did go off on the whole PARs benefits program that you guys were paying into, and I've misinterpreted it as the actual restaurant itself. But, with that said, let me say this. I seen $1,000 bills for Lemon Leaf, $900 bills for Lemon Leaf, and let me see, do we own Bex? Because how, why is the city paying for the Bex bandstand if the Bex is privately owned? See McDonald's, I'd be one pissed-off father if you gave my daughter McDonald's food, you know, $1,725 on McDonald's. ABC shopping cart retrieval, $15,000, or no, well, total of $15,000 as of six months from now, or from the beginning of the year till now. I think that the shopping carts should be retrieved, or the people retrieving them should be paid by the corporations that have them. The roundabout design, which was $32,000, I was paid for already, so, as far as a discussion of a design for a roundabout, it's already been discussed, it's been surveyed and paid for, $5,975, or $97, and the design was already purchased at $32,000. So, if any business owners would eject to that, you know, tough cookies because you guys already have a plan to implement it according to the check registry. You guys already paid for the design, so I wanted to see why you would waste $32,000 on not building something. We spent $167,000 on red flick traffic systems, which is the red light cameras, and that's their cut. I wonder how much the city has made off of that. We paid, oh, let me see, $103,000 to the court for parking violations, you know, we're not New York, I don't know why they're so restrictive on parking out here. We've paid for Chardonnay Pinot Noir wine at AV Winery, somebody did. Leona Valley Winery, $411. Let me see what else, I got all kinds of, yeah, it's crazy. Let me see, Clean House Cafe, $972. Double cakes, or Double D cupcakes for specialty cupcakes, $250. It goes on and on, and this is only for six months, well, this one's, this one's last year. But Lemon Leaf, $1,500, $785, $1632, $1602, $1788, $411.
Mr. Mayor, does the speaker have a comment, or is he just gonna read the report?
Yeah, no, yeah, I, why are we spending our money?
That's a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Do you wanna, we'll just put them all on the consent calendar and take them at the end if that's your pleasure.
Do we do it later?
Sure. So, just, we'll move it to the consent calendar.
Okay, next item.
There was a card put in by Nicole Parsons for CC3, we've already voted on it, so I'm gonna set that aside. We're now on CC4, and there are three speaker's cards on CC4.
Thank you. Michael Reeves.
Council, Staff, tonight I want to speak about ordinance 967, it's regarding filling vacancies on the city council, and I have a little familiarity with filling vacancies. 2007, I was a candidate for the Los Angeles, City of Los Angeles Community College Board of Trustees. I came in third place and got 25,000 votes. After the election, we had two vacancies on the Board of Trustees, and of course, with a voting population of 2 million people, it's not feasible to have an election to fill the vacancy. So, the way the Board of Trustees handled it, they let anyone who was interested in filling for the vacancies to fill out a packet and issue a statement of why they would want to serve on the board, and they also had five-minute time to speak before the board. And this happened twice, we had two vacancies. One person left, his dad was a United States Congressman, and another board member left from the State Assembly. Even though the results are pretty cut and dry, they were based on party and ethnicity, the public did get a chance to apply for the positions, and that's what I'd like to ask the council to do, let the public apply for these positions instead of just having the mayor and council appoint the people. I think that, even though in the end you may appoint the person you want anyway, at least the public will have an opportunity to apply for the positions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David G.
How's it going? Okay, CC4, I don't know what's wrong with the old, the old ordinance, I don't know why you guys are trying to revise it, but is this because, now, say, this is hypothetically, excuse me, now, say, you, anybody that's been elected, it's like the LPA, and then now is, I guess, can be elected to, or appointed, excuse me, appointed, because those aren't elected, offices or whatever. If anybody, like, say, if you're appointed to the LPA, which you are, and then you're voted to the HDPA, and it's too time-consuming to be a member of city council, and somebody decides to go, is this a reason why you guys are trying to, so that way, you guys fill up those seats, and you guys can fill up another seat by appointment instead of an election, you know, to oppose, you know, somebody, you know, you know what I mean, like, it's hard to convey into words, but is that possible? So, if Mr. Chris is on the LPA and then is appointed to the HDPA, and it's too time-consuming for you to be a city council member, do you want to have the power to appoint another city council member in order to appoint somebody that you favor instead of having an election to fill that seat? And I think that the only reason why you're doing this, or the city council is doing this, because it wasn't, is they have an agenda, and I don't know what that is at this time, but I'm willing to figure it out and find out everything that has to do with anything in regards to this and any other agenda or item on, at city council. And I don't have to answer, I ask a question, you know, just so you guys know, I don't have to ask any questions, I can make statements and stuff like that, and that's to you, Mr. Smith. Have a good day.
Thank you. Nicole.
I just wanted to know, like, when, when are the times that we can ask questions?
That's off-subject.
I know, but, 'cause, you know, that someone in the community, they put...
Nicole, you're off-subject, would you like to speak on CC4 and give input?
I am, sir. I am, sir. I wanted to find out if, well, somebody from the community, Mr. Mayor, had put in a recommendation that, 'cause I had enough good words for everybody, that I'd be like, recognized as a citizen of, like, the year, and you all did never have...
That's off-subject.
No, it's not, and then have a citizen.
Oh, hi, sir.
Oh, oh, okay. Jesus has the credit.
Thank you. Consent calendar, item number 5, David G.
No, I don't feel like speaking about this one, thank you.
CC6, David G. CC7, Michael Reeves.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, I've spoken to you about this before, about the operational agreement between Grace Resources and the City of Lancaster, and there was another article in the Antelope Valley Press this week, and Mr. Baker, who is the head of the facility, is soliciting money because he's short, and the grant money hasn't come in yet. Given the current financial condition of the country and the city and the state, again, I think the City of Lancaster should step back before we give this facility to someone to run without exhausting all avenues of partnering, partnering with a larger facility down under like Fred Jordan Mission, Salvation Army, or someone that can help Mr. Baker so that he can concentrate on running the facility and they can be a partner. To turn it over to him, and I think it's gonna be a burden, 'cause he has had a partner in the path of Catholic charities. And frankly, I'm surprised that the city, considering how generous we've been to the Catholic Church and Sacred Heart Church, that the city didn't try to negotiate something with Catholic charities and point out to them that we've been generous to them, and we would hope that they would continue to help run Grace Resources. So, as of now, I would not approve this lease agreement until we exhausted all avenues of maybe partnering with another agency. Thank you.
Thank you. David G.
I think any place where the homeless can go and live, they should have that opportunity. Feels like maybe the city's just trying to take control of that. We all know how, how the city looks on the homelessness, 'cause homeless is a crime in the Lancaster, California. I mean, it says in the sheriff's station, homelessness is not a crime, but I know a few homeless people that have been arrested for just being homeless, and city ordinances say that you can't camp or live, you know, not in a home, or you can be subject to arrest. I just hope that you guys, the city, I hope the city will provide a place where the homeless can go, maybe have a move.
Two minutes and eight seconds? It's Mr. Talbot from yelling from the back.
Yeah, I would appreciate, though, if you guys would look at me and give me that courtesy.
Mr. G, did you have a comment on...
I am commenting.
No, you're commenting on homelessness in general.
Yes, and what is Grace Resource Center doing, sir? Are they providing a place for the homeless?
It's time for comment, not questions.
Now I'm asking you a question, because last time you said if I had a question, so now I do have a question.
No questions.
Okay, well, then let me finish my statement in regards to this item. Thank you. If the city will allow a place like Grace Resource Center to function the way it's supposed to function for homeless people and give them a venue for them to go and make their bed and sleep and have that peace, you know, at nighttime to wake up in the morning and live in Lancaster, they're citizens of the United States and they should have that right just to live, not subject to arrest because somebody might be camping behind the new RX Paris building or something, you know? Nobody should be subject to arrest because they're homeless, and I hope that the city will provide a place, or at least, hopefully, this works out the way it's supposed to work out, and not the city taking over something and depriving people, because I don't know what your guys' agenda is taking over Grace Resource Center. And the Catholic Church has well more than enough money to fund these operations, and if you haven't seen the Vatican, I suggest people take some, go look it up online and how beautiful that place is. Thank you.
CC8, David G. David G.
I don't feel that our city should be buying up real estate, period. We're not realtors, you know? Maybe Mark Bozegan is, I'm not sure. I know Bozegan Realty is a company, but I want to, is the acquisition of all these properties made to the public, like, who's going to buy them, or who's buying them, or who owns the companies, or are there privacy contracts or whatever clauses that are attached to them? And you guys are, I guess, taking a lot of property, or buying up a lot of property, so it seems like you guys might be cornering the market in the property out here, or maybe not giving people a chance to buy it, or maybe people just don't want to buy it. So I don't see why the city would need to waste the money to buy a property and then invest money into it when they're already upside down. And I've heard rumors that a lot of the properties that you guys acquired are upside-down properties, and the money that you put in them, and they're still upside down, and they take forever to sell. So unless you guys are trying to sell them to somebody, I don't know. We'll see. Thank you.
David G.
Yeah, I don't agree with you. You guys buying property, you know, whatsoever in the City of Lancaster. We're not real estate agents, you know? This city, I don't think that's a job for the city to be doing. There's a motive behind this, and I have to figure it out, and I can't wait to talk to some people that can help me and point me in that direction, because I love to soak up information. I love to read all day, and when I get a hold of stuff like this or documents in regard into what the city's trying to buy, it excites me, and I can't wait to hopefully find something wrong with that and point it out. But I don't think this is beneficial to the city whatsoever. I don't. Thank you.
CC10.
CC10.
David G.
I don't think that Lancaster should be buying people's real estate. I don't think, that's not a good idea. You know, what's the purpose of you guys buying the real estate? Can anybody tell me?
That's a question. This is time for comment.
Oh, it's a comment-only, okay. Well, I think you guys are wrong to be buying people's property and not allowing the private sector to buy up the property, fix it up, and then sell it for a profit. So there's something wrong with that, and I disagree with this.
CC11.
David G.
You know, I didn't get enough time, so I think I would like to say that I don't think that Lancaster should be buying real estate, period, whatsoever, like they shouldn't be buying Lemon Leaf for people that sit on the council or for people in the city. I don't think that we should be paying for people's property, like, I don't think we should be paying for Beck's Bandstand.
That's off-point. It's CC11, please.
Yeah, acquisition. I'm just saying, I don't like the fact that you guys are buying property like I don't like you guys are buying Double D cupcakes for $250. I don't like the fact that you guys are buying property, fixing it up, and it being upside-down. Like, I don't like the fact that you guys are buying, you know, Grand Prix rentals or VIP service for $1,500 at Beck's for the Grand Prix. I think that the funds could be used for something other than buying real estate. Let the private sector do that. Thank you.
CC13, David G.
No, thank you. I don't feel like speaking on this one.
Nicole.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak for her? Please. She, I've asked her to come back and actually ask one of the staff members to sit with her and to help her to understand the difference between what you're passing tonight and what she proposed some time ago, and I think that would be a lot clearer for her if she could do that rather than try to put it in some words which she can't and I can't either. So would you consider coming to the staff and let them explain to you how that all works?
Yeah, yes, but if you let them know that the Armegosa approval and Mr...
See, they're going to kick us down because we got to stick to the subject.
That is part of the subject. You guys adopted my plan. I never got compensated. I never got...
That's off-point.
See, what I'd like for you to do, if you would, you're free to do whatever you want with your minutes, but I'd suggest that you go to the staff, call the city manager, and he'll put you with a staff member. They'll go over that with you, and then you'll understand it clearer after that. Would you consider that? Please?
I don't know what you mean, because the five-year plan on the budget...
I know, but...
Is that part?
It takes time for that, for you to understand that. It takes time for them to act on it, so...
They already acted on it. Now they're canceling me out with this new plan. Never have I been compensated, or the people, the public have gotten our services, our effective services, and I'm still a developer. When I started...
You told me you were going to let me speak for you. That's what you told me.
Yes.
Everybody's going to laugh at us in a few minutes because we are, and I'm supposed to be your representative. Will you let the city, let the council, let the staff talk to you and call that with you?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar that we've just put together on the ones that have been pulled. That's currently comprised.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to public hearing item, we'll now open the public hearing regarding PH1 and hear the staff report from Public Works Director. Is Robert Neal doing this?
There are no speaker cards on this side.
Let's waive the report. Any objections? Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Adams, we can take these resolutions all in one, correct, with the same...
Yes.
Oh, well, let's close the public hearing.
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 11-50, 11-51, and 11-52.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. New business. Jason Coddle's doing this? Want to wave? The staff reports and the items given to the public. Want to waive the staff report? We'll waive the staff report. David G.
I haven't spoke yet, so you guys are still going to keep going with my time? All right. Like I said, Joint Powers Housing, or High Desert Power Authority, we're going to grant Pittsburgh, California, 20 years of contract, which is binding, in order to create power facilities in this, in this community for 20 years, and every third, every other year, they're going to have three-fifths of a vote. Okay, so that means they can acquire property, it can be given to property, they can be given property. I think eminent domain could probably even be done with that. I don't think that it's a good idea, and Article 11, Section 9A, doesn't say that you can have an outside community come in our community and establish a municipal authority. It's not in the Constitution that you can do that, and I know that's the attorney, I know you're an attorney, and if I'm reading this right, you don't have that power. Pittsburgh has no right to come in here and have a three-fifths vote every other year to decide if they want to build a power plant on property that they've bought or that they've been given, you know? So every other year, even if you contest it, and Ms. Marquez or whoever's on the HDPA, they will still have the three-fifths vote that they need every other year in order to accomplish what they want. I'm very opposed to any city coming in here having a municipal authority for 20 years, okay? I don't know how old you guys are going to be, but I'm going to be 45, you know, before we can, before we can come up with a new contract. It's not a good idea, and I don't think, and if it's unconstitutional, you're an attorney, you should know better, and if a court finds it unconstitutional, I believe that you should be held accountable, as well as the city attorney. It's, you know, whether or not it'll benefit the community or not, that is yet to be seen. All I know is it's going to cost the community money, it's going to cost another community money, and you don't know whether or not we're going to get the right amount of power out of this. To just create the High Desert Power Authority out of thin air, just like the LPA, I don't think is right, and hopefully you guys can understand my position on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 11-53.
Let's vote.
My machine's off.
Well, you voted.
Mine's not blinking.
I didn't vote. I did not vote.
You caught me. Let's vote again.
We voted for you.
Okay. Five yes. All right. Last week, we had a discussion about the using local vendors with the different agencies we belong to, and I thought I'd open that up again. It seems to me that if we're part of any joint powers agreement, that we should be insisting that they use local vendors whenever possible, but I wanted to hear your thoughts about it.
Well, we've been fighting for local vendors on the AVTA, and, but our sister city to the south, Mr. Ledford, he said it was unconstitutional, and what do we got to do to hold their hands when we were bidding, I think it was auditing service for the AVTA. So what we did was give $70,000 to a firm in Long Beach when they said none of our firms were qualified to do that, and I just don't think that we should be doing that kind of stuff. We should be awarding contracts, if possible, to local vendors. That's just what we should be doing.
I agree with Councilman Chris. When I was on the AVTA a number of years ago, we had an incident where the financial officer, who's no longer there, had sent out RFPs to insurance companies all in Orange County that she had been affiliated with before, and none of the local insurance companies actually were able to put in anything and lost, they lost the bidding, so, and I agree with that, especially, you know, I mean, there's times that there's outside, we don't have somebody in this valley that can do a particular job. That's different, but if we have somebody here that's competitive, that we can use, it should be used, and we should maybe make it as a policy that that's what our city's policy is, and that the other agencies that we sit on, we should try to, you know, get them to go along with that also.
Why don't we put it on next meeting's agenda to actually direct whoever the council member sitting on the various agencies are to put that on their agency agenda and vote on it, all right? Can we do that?
Could we get something, maybe the verbiage for it by next time, so we see what the language is? That way, whoever's sitting, you know, I can take you to the San Antonio district, so it's consistent.
You can help us with that, can't you, Joe?
Of course.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. No action on the financing authority. Do you have any announcements, City Manager?
Just two, if I can find my notes. First, one of the events that we do that gets some coverage, but I don't think people realize how fun it is, is we have a Land Coaster Bike Ride, is it the second Wednesday, which would be tomorrow of every month. It's headed up through our Architectural Design Commission, and last time we had over 100 people ride. It's a great evening ride. The evenings are beautiful, and I'd invite the public to come out. We meet at City Hall. Information's on the website, and just go out for about a 10 to 15-mile ride. It's really good. Secondly, we're very pleased to announce...
The first 10 miles are good.
Yes, the first 10 are better than the last five. Secondly, we were pleased to announce that we will have our inaugural Farmer's Market starting this Thursday. The Farmer's Market will be every Thursday from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. This Thursday, we also have the, another in the Sierra Toyota Concert Series, which will start at 6:30. Farmer's Market, we're really looking forward to this. It's something that raw inspiration in the city will tell you that we have to grow, and this will be the first one. They tell you it takes about two years to get it to where everyone wants it to be. We're going to try to beat that, so we invite everyone to come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have the judgment on the Rubin versus Lancaster put on the city website?
Absolutely. We have, we'll send it out with the press release.
Okay, before we go to the speaker cards, let's have a short break. Back on. City Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the City Council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and as concisely as possible, so that if the City Council, the city manager, or city staff needs to get in touch with you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you approach the podium. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. State law does prohibit the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
David Abber. David Abber. Maria Gutierrez. Maria Gutierrez?
Good evening.
I'm sorry, that was the outcome of a seizure. So I know I'm gonna stand out. Hi, how are you doing? Um, City Council, please consider. A known lawyer could open a law clinic with advocates, for example. HUD advocates, Renner's Rights. These advocates could, can be, um, I'm sorry, I remembered that. These advocates can be trained, intern, online courses. Please, please, um, sorry, that's a little swollen right now. People bring alleged, um, people, I can't read it 'cause of my eye right now.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me do that over, so we'll--
Sure, start the clock again.
Thank you. People being illegally evicted, loss of work. Mental Health America, for example, okay? Um, right here in the law book. Mental Health may have former patients as employees. Uh, Mental Health may have, may keep the employees to keep, no, they may not keep the residential programs. Uh, let me see. Uh, favoritism is an issue in the grant programs, okay? If, uh, for example, and I'm not lying here, a lot of the Mental Health America programs, okay? What, let's just say there's a, um, person that, let's say a patient wants to work there. They may through vocational programs. But then here, after they work there, they're not allowed the, um, residency of the homes. While they're over there keeping the homes, and the people don't get them. Where do we get to live in? See what I'm saying? So that's wrong. Now, let me go on with this. Oh, yes. Here is a discrimination from me, because I couldn't stay in the shelter 'cause I have seizures, as we see. Okay, that's HUD.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said, because you what?
I said that here's a discrimination complaint to HUD, literally going on right now. And just so that I can say something, there's a lot of talk about homeless. I'm homeless to the T, okay? But here, the, um, just so that, and this is a, habitation is defined by the Webster New College Dictionary, page five four five. As a dwelling place, dwelling is defined as shelter, as a house or building in which we live. Um, let me see. Let me go down here. Residence is a, residence, residence in a trailer or vehicle, or any public camp, campground, may continue a, um, well, that's about voting, okay? But the point is, is that here, if I'm sleeping somewhere where people are allowed to go look at a plane, that doesn't even say no loitering, because it's a site to go see a plane. Then if I can stand there, I can lay there. So the point is, um, Mayor, I'm being, you know, I'm not gonna be like other people who talk mean to you. The point is, is that there's not even a loitering sign. There's only no roller skating. So if I'm not allowed to go there, um, just to go look at a plane, I mean, you know, go sit there. I mean, there should be like a gate around it or something, 'cause there's really no limitations for us to do anything. I was illegally evicted, why am I getting a ticket for laying down? That's a lot of the things that we, we go through. What exactly, what exactly are the things we cannot and can do as homeless people? Where can we go? 'Cause I mean, um, I'm human, I'm gonna close my eyes, I'm gonna go to sleep. I'm gonna do several things. What is it that here we can and can't do? If you bring advocates here, as a lawyer, you can have a little law clinic here, and then at the same time, you can educate some, uh, future lawyers. And you can get these courses, like I said, online. So if you could help us, there would be an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Martha Charlton?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've lived in the city of Lancaster for the last forty-three years. I've watched it grow and prosper. I've watched with interest the various meetings of this body and other committees. I have one comment and one suggestion. First, my comment. Now, I consider myself a semi-senior citizen. Semi, because in some cases, you have to be fifty-five, and in other cases, you have to be sixty-five, and I'm in the middle. So sometimes it's senior citizen, sometimes I'm not. As such, I avoid the roundabout at Palmdale at all costs, even if it means going out of my way. You have many senior citizens living within this new Boulevard area, which is wonderful. Have you asked them about it? Have you taken them out to Palmdale, put them in a car, and said, "Here, drive"? I wonder. Now, my suggestion and my real reason for being here, and I hope I can read it now, I'm trying, okay? For the past five years, I've supported the Pony Little League baseball teams at Sky Tower, Sky Tower Park, because my grandson has been playing there. He has played for five seasons, been chosen on all five All-Star teams, played on travel teams and ballball teams. He clearly loves the sport. Now, I know that the city has promised to upgrade the fields by building some new ones on the old fairgrounds site. I know it's been at the bottom of the list. But our children and grandchildren should be a priority. Who can we count on, if not the next generation? Phew, excuse me. One man has spearheaded this effort for all the children. His name is Richard Masiass. He's been here many times on behalf of children. He was my grandson's first coach, and he has followed his playing ever since. He is always there to encourage him and to teach him good sportsmanship. Almost all the coaches are there because their son or their daughter is on their team. Richard's grandchildren are not on his team because they're older now. But yet, he still coaches teams and works with players and encourages them in all of life's lessons, as well as the fundamentals of baseball. My suggestion is this. When, not if, but when you build the new Pony League fields or complex, my suggestion is that you name the complex after Richard Masiass, who has single-handedly done more for the advancement of Pony League baseball in this valley than anyone else. He has committed to the children of Lancaster and their future. He shows his commitment by teaching them not just baseball, but dedication to a goal, fairness, how to do your best, and the advantages of teamwork. Richard is a humble man, who would never think about an honor like this. But honoring him this would, this way, would indeed reward a man who thinks only about the children of Lancaster and their betterment. I look forward to watching the children play baseball at the Richard Masiass Pony League complex. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Howard Coleman?
Thank you, council members. You'll have to pardon me, I'm just an old truck driver. But I have an issue here that's of great concern to me. And it has to do with the senior citizens that lives behind the Boulevard over here. I didn't think I'd ever be handicapped. But due to aneurysms in my legs and what have you, it's painful for me to walk. You have an access that runs between the parking lot and to the Boulevard. And it's a, sort of a hallway. But it's not open until twelve, it's, there's a person next door to that that has the key to that door to open the door, but she won't open it until about noon. And then on the weekends, they won't open it, there, there's nobody there to open it. And we have a lot of members, a lot of senior citizens over at Arbor Court, who have only one leg. And, uh, they're in wheelchairs, hand wheelchairs, and some of them are walkers. And it's very difficult for them to, it may not seem difficult to a lot of people, but to walk the extra few half a block or block around just to go to Bank of America. And what I'd like to see is that access breezeway opened up a little earlier than twelve o'clock noon, when it's in the very heat of the day. These people over here won't come over here, like I said, it's rather intimidating to them. But, uh, I'm kinda blunt. So I'd like to see it opened up earlier, so that they don't have to go out at noon when the, when the hot weather is blistering down on them. And it's, and I know that wouldn't get heat exhaustion going that far, but it's, it is very difficult for some of them.
Thank you. Mark, can you make certain that this gets looked into? And if we can do something, do something?
Absolutely, I think we know what he's talking about in the person with the key.
Okay, we'll work on it. We'll do, if we're able to do something, we'll do something, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing also.
If, if we're able to do something, we'll get it done, alright?
I hope you do, thank you.
Okay, and Mark will talk to you about it. Thank you. Lee Weissman?
Hi, thank this council for hearing me. Um, I'm here on behalf of, I'm a medical marijuana, uh, patient. And I've been dealing with a collective in town here that's in an industrial area. And due to a, another private collective, which does delivery out here, which I'm sure you all know who I'm talking about, has thrown everyone under the bus. And now, this council or somebody in town here wants this collective to move out of this industrial park area and move into a residential area. Now, I don't see why they can't just leave this collective in this private area, because the laws are quite clear about where collectives can be. And they really do not want them by any churches, parks, schools, or anything. And if you, if you force this person into a residential neighborhood, that, uh, you're gonna increase crime in that neighborhood. You're gonna have easier access for these younger kids that are going out and buying their prescriptions down below. And you can't, won't be able to keep track of anyone, or anything that goes home. And dope houses would be popping up everywhere. Whereas in an industrial park, you know, it, you could give a safe, our main goal is to have safe and private access. We're not looking for a club to sit around and get stoned in. We want a place that we can go and get our medication and take it home and medicate ourselves. We've tried all the other things, this is the only thing that worked for us. We've tried pharmaceuticals, they do not work. We have delivery services out here that are run by people that, three or four guys show up at your house, they park in front of your house and makes your house look like a drug, drug house. Then you have problems with all your neighbors. These are private collectives, nonprofit, private collectives that run donations. They're just like any other place, like an elf's lodge or anything, where people go to discuss similar problems. I, nothing against our finest military in the world that we have, and they deserve everything that they, they want. And, uh, uh, they get to go to a, their own private collective that we call BFWs and American Legions. And they medicate with alcohol, and they discuss problems that they have mutual problems from their great service to our country. That's all we're looking for, is something on the equal grounds of that. I know this is a great issue with this council. It's been a very forward-looking council that I've been very impressed with, and I hope that you guys keep open minds about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Long?
Hi, first of all, I wanna say, good evening to you, Mayor and, and Council. And thank you for hearing me out. I think you guys are doing a great job with the city, and I really, as a citizen of the city of Lancaster, I really like the progress that the city is making.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I, I have one concern, about an issue that was, that was tabled, but I know, I know you guys will be reconsidering this again. It, it is about the horse-drawn carriages on, on the Boulevard. And although I think it's a very novel idea, and I think it's a good idea in theory, when it comes to its actual application, I think it could have some disastrous consequences. One, I, I'm aware that, that the owner treats her horses really well. I'm not, I'm not saying that she, that she is gonna do anything bad to them or anything like that. The two things that I am concerned about is, one, to slow down in the traffic on the Boulevard while the horse-drawn carriage is gonna, is on the Boulevard. Slow down to seven miles an hour, that might annoy some people, could also cause a little friction in the road, even cause some road, road rage. The other thing is too, no matter how well-trained the horse might be, and I'm sure she's trained her, her horses really well, there, there still is that possibility that the horse might get spooked, even if they are used to hearing sounds in the road, that the horse could still, could still get spooked. And that, as a citizen of the city of Lancaster, I feel that that puts us at risk as we are driving down the Boulevard. Now, I was saying that it, that it was a novel idea in theory, but the only way that I can actually see it working is, is to have the horse-drawn carriage available during special events in which we close off, in which you close off the Boulevard to, to, to all cars and just have pedestrians on there. There still is a risk involved there, but it's, it's a lesser risk. And as, as you guys are considering this, I'd like to just consider those factors and the safety of our citizens while we drive down the Boulevard. I, for one, I love driving down the Boulevard, I try to drive it as much as I can. And I just wanna feel safe while, while I'm doing it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lyle Talbot?
Thought you were in Europe. Yes, two months from now. I'm bringing to your attention the fact that Waste Management wants to bring in more trash. If you remember, I was here about eight years ago when Blue Fire wanted to build an ethanol refinery out at Waste Management's front gate. And they would bring green trash in and make ethanol. Well, I pointed out that we only have three months, excuse me, six months growing season up here for green waste. So the other green waste for the six months to sustain some, an operation like that would have to be brought from Los Angeles area, or Santa Clarita, where it's a much milder climate. And that would be ninety-six trucks a day pumping up our freeway, confusing our, and congesting our freeway, causing infrastructure problems for our city and county roads. But, you know, they went away. We opposed that, Desert Citizens Against Pollution, and they went to Alabama. So, you know, they needed jobs down there. Job is a four-letter word, you know? But the city, I'd like to have the city attend this meeting that's gonna be held on the same night as your council meeting on the twenty-sixth, an hour after yours starts, and it's gonna be at the Public Library. I'd like to have someone from the city contact Waste Management and see if that's not a really good date, because a lot of people who represent Lancaster and are concerned about Lancaster behind me, they should be able to attend that meeting, even though they wanna be here for the council proceedings. So I think we could maybe contact them and see if they could postpone or pick a new date, so they don't slide by like they try to do all the time. And when you have this Citizens Park or Heroes Park, I hope you will recognize the people about four years ago that met in the chambers, in, in the building here, who planned and took out, laid out the, the, laid out the city, they like to see it, or the city Boulevard. And you should honor them. I think there were about fifty of us there, three generations of my family were here, my son and my granddaughter and myself. And I never hear any mention of anybody that's responsible except Vice Mayor Smith. He seems to get all the credit and all the shine on his face.
Thank you. Melanie Coker?
Good evening, Council. First, I'd like to apologize to you, Mayor Perez. I did not intentionally locate holistically yours up or around or below, you know, around your office. Um, I located there because it was a safe place for our collective.
Are you near my office?
Pardon me?
Are you near my office?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Not there anymore, but, yeah, I was up the street from you.
Oh, okay.
Had your brochures in there too. Okay, so, uh, since we are private, we needed a place--
No, Mr. Smith, I did not get a discount.
Okay, I located there because it was a safe place for our collective. Since we are private, we needed a place to be without causing any problems in the community. And there has been, excuse me, without causing problems in the community. and there has been, excuse me, without causing problems in the community. It is an industrial zone, we have been there for a year and a half, okay? There has been zero complaints by our collective operating. We are not open to the public, only the members of our collective come to this location by calling ahead and reserving the time to come. The prohibition in Lancaster stated was not meant to interfere with individual rights of persons to participate in collectives in order to possess or use marijuana for medical purposes, but it does not state where we can have our collective at. My interpretation was, we could be in an area that is safe and away from school, churches, no signs on the buildings, no advertising, just a place where we can conduct ourselves in a proper manner, and it worked for a year and a half, okay? Now, it seems that was where you've hurt somebody's feelings. So, on June 28th, at the city council meeting, our collective was brought to your attention, and a complaint was made by Victoria Zavala, who is a director of a collective, Alternative Healing, who services her members by delivery. What really upsets me is the fact that her complaint could have been taken into your city hall at the counter and dealt with that way instead of putting us, as Lee said, under the bus, which is what happened.
Did something happen?
No, I'm just saying, here's, I mean, that's the proper thing to do. Why stand here and say, well, there's a collective, they're blah, 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 you know, go get them, you know?
You really don't...
And she's doing exactly the same thing.
You really don't expect me to be sympathetic because people come up and say bad things, do you?
No, I don't. So, where was I? See, you got me messed up here.
Sorry about that.
So, what really upsets me is the fact that a complaint could have been addressed in there. So, instead, I mean, for someone who advocates for Americans for safe access, she really blew that one to me. You know, shame on Victoria. I do not go to the poppy festivals, I do not go to the fairgrounds, I do not go to Thursday Night at the Square, and stand there like a medicine woman in the 18th century. I don't do it.
What can we do for you?
Oh, well, I was going to finish.
Okay.
Is it okay to finish or not finish?
Go ahead and finish, just tell me what you want from us.
Well, I got to get to that part, I got to get to the...
Okay.
Okay, so, what do I have left? That's mean. Okay, so, anyway...
I want to hear the end of the story, I mean...
I'm trying to get to the story.
Okay.
I want, oh my gosh, hi, everybody.
Okay.
Oh, I can't wait for this one to be out there. Oh, gosh, you really did it, Tony, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, I came to the conclusion a while ago that the city of Lancaster will never allow medical marijuana dispensaries. Why would you? There's three in Roseman, there's one in Mojave, there's eight delivery services. What's the point, you know? But there are, we want a place of our own, we don't want to associate that way. That's my point.
Well, it sounds to me like you got one.
Well, okay, thank you then. So, can I...
Women, that's just me talking, I mean...
Here's my state board of accusation notice, here's this, and here's my business license. That's what I'm asking you, I just want my business license.
We've dealt with that, and the business license code doesn't allow us to give a business license for a collective in a commercial zone.
So, am I... We just want a, we just want a safe place to be, you know? Our patients come in there, we talk about their kids, their illnesses, their whatever's going on, we're just like a little place.
Okay, all right, I got your point.
You got my point?
I do.
Here's what's the answer?
Uh, no.
Fine.
Sorry.
Okay, so...
You need, you need three votes, you don't have them.
I didn't think I was going to get them, but, okay, so what about this part about the residential neighborhoods?
Well, I certainly, I certainly hope that the sheriff's department will proceed with all due haste on anybody opening up in a residential neighborhood, that whoever does that belongs in jail. I mean, that's just the way it is. We're not, we're not going to endanger our neighborhoods with this.
I didn't think you would, and I don't want to go to a neighborhood, but I was told by Calvin in your city hall that I have to move to a residential neighbor.
Calvin's that way, you know?
Well, hey, that's what he told me. I called him on many occasions.
All right, okay, okay.
Fine.
We're done. Thank you. I'm sorry, I can't help you.
Okay, that's okay.
Michael Reeves? And if I knew you were going to be that much fun, I'd have saved you for last.
That's not what I meant about buying local.
At the last meeting, the council requested that the city manager give a traffic report about the traffic circle and parking structure, et cetera. So, I took the initiative and did my own survey, and I don't have a model that I based my survey on, and I don't have any variables, but these are just my observations, and I have a statement on the survey. And I'm sorry I don't have enough copies for everybody, I was running short of money, so, you know, what you see is what you got. I did a walking survey of the current and potential parking places on the boulevard. I was especially observant of the spaces available on the islands in the middle of the boulevard. Based on my observations, I think the islands may accommodate upward to 100 more spaces if the light poles and the trees and the benches and the flowerpots that hinder current parking are removed. The lights on those poles can be replaced with lights hung from light poles on the corners of the boulevard. In addition, I believe there is ample off-street parking available on the side streets of the boulevard if no stopping at any time signs are removed, and those areas are designated P, public parking, and are prominently advertised by bigger and better display P parking signs. I do not see the need for a parking structure based upon my observations. In addition, a parking structure would present security and safety concerns that the city would have to address if it were constructed. So, before we make a decision on the traffic circle or a parking structure, we might want to consider the survey and increase the parking spaces for the merchants on the boulevard who I really feel for. These people are really struggling, and anything I can do to help them, and I really believe, if you take a look at this, we can increase the parking spaces for the merchants in the boulevard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to say, Katie, I love you, kiss Tiana for me. I miss you very much. Okay, let me point out again, the roundabout was paid for already, the design, the roundabout traffic engineering design, it was already paid for, $32,000, so there's no more discussion. You guys already decided to put one in, I know that. Let me see. I don't think, I think the city has lost touch with the community completely. I think people are out for their own personal gain. How they're going about doing it is with words on papers and things that they're passing. Topco Energy, you know, I don't agree with that whatsoever. It's a communist country, first of all, and if you go with the California constitution and it says, Article 11, Section 9, it says, you know, we have the right to, you know, build a power plant, it may furnish, or, it says, we can go outside of boundaries except with another municipal corporation furnishes the same service or does not give consent. It doesn't say we can go outside the country or bring in another country into our community and take over. So, the LPA is going to buy from Topco the energy, correct? And then they're going to sell it back to Southern California, which is in turn going to sell it back to us, the community. So, if it, how does that benefit us whatsoever? I don't see it as it can. The only thing it benefits is your salary, your salary, and whoever's going to get paid for it, or whoever's, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot, you have a $244,000 a year salary, base minimum, correct? And it can range, and you have a, what is it, 20 or...
Please direct your comments to the council and not to staff, thank you.
You have a seven, what is it, a $10,447 a month base minimum, and it can go all the way up to $17,000 a month, so, I'm sure you, and then you were saying on television that our city will produce more energy than we take in. So, are we all going to have free energy, you know? Or is it, are we going to pay electricity bills? Who's going to really profit from this? Are we going to keep paying people's lemon leaf bills with this money, people's BECs, bandstand bills, red light traffic, AV, you know, bicycle helmets for $2,900, 19 of them, you know? I want to see what a $150 helmet looks like, you know? The AV press, 50, from the beginning of the month to now, we've spent in ads $53,000. No wonder the AV press isn't really that critical of this council. And with that, thank you.
As always, it was a pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. What a joy it is to see democracy in action.
Is that what that is?
I believe in duality, and I like what Winston Churchill said. He said, "The strongest argument against democracy is a five-minute conversation with the average person." So, you get a lot of diversity, and I enjoy it all, I really do, and I appreciate this council immensely. First of all, let me say to the council, congratulations on your victory in the lawsuit, and I'm looking forward to seeing the particulars. We may have made history, and that's always great for our city. Next, I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and the city for recommending Flourish. I just finished this great book, and it has so many great things in it that help produce well-being. I've heard this spoken about before, one of the things that you can do is just be grateful when you go to bed, write down three things you're grateful for, and you wake up feeling much better. I like to encourage people to look for what's right instead of what's wrong, and that allows a freer flow of information. I've been pretty busy lately, I've been out, I have attended a few events, and one of the things that I found at a mediation seminar I went to was the Alternative to Violence Project. This is an incredible program run by a young lady named Diana Couch that I met at the opening of the Wellness Home. I didn't know what she did, but this is a program that started in prison, basically to teach people the skills that they need to interact correctly without resorting to violence or anger. And they do it also in the community setting, she's having a seminar soon, that goes over this and teaches people, it's a three-part program, you can become a facilitator in this program by working all three of the events, and it's an excellent alternative combined with mediation to help people resolve problems. And finally tonight, I get a chance, if you've ever wondered how much sense I could make off the three-minute clock, I get a chance at the Unitarian Universalist Church on Cedar on Sunday at 1:30 to speak, and I'm looking forward to that, talking about God, the nature of God, the nature of consciousness. It's up to us how we project our consciousness and how we induce our emotion, and the things in this book really help, just being kind to one another helps, looking for the positive again helps, and there's trouble coming. I can feel the tension that exists, and now we need to love each other more than ever to help mitigate some of this harm that is just coming down the pike. So, I love you all, thank you, good evening, God bless you.
Thank you. Any comments from the city council before we adjourn?
Yeah, just want to thank staff, especially Mr. Green for the Fourth of July events that he did, it was a great job.
Thank you. Okay, we're adjourned until Tuesday, July 26, 2011, at 5:00 p.m. Carol, I wish my day was done, and I wish I was coming home, but it'll be a while.